Good evening, everyone. The time being six o'clock PM on Tuesday, July 12, 2022. I'll be in Congress meeting in the West Virginia Department of Order. And I still stand for the presidency. The first item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me remote in from afar. I'm attending the Executive Superintendent's Conference down in Cape. And I know this is a little awkward with me on the big screen and you in the little screen. But I think my report will be helpful if I break up the screen a little bit. So you're not seeing my entire face the whole time. And I hope everyone's doing well, and I'm going to share my report. I'm going to start with personnel updates. First, I'd just like to say that our new Bartlett High School principal has started. He started on July 1st, Mr. Ryan Collins. He has been hitting the ground running and working diligently with Ms. Nieves on structures and support. They're looking deeply at the schedule. They're meeting with staff. He has opened hours for staff to come in. So he's also touching base with district administrators and getting acclimated on the systems and supports. I think he brings a wealth of knowledge with him, in particular with scheduling and power school. And he's truly excited. He will be at the August 24th meeting along with hopefully our new Park Ave principal. I do have an update on the Park Ave principal search. The screening committee has selected five candidates to be interviewed this Thursday. And they're fast-tracking things because as you know, there are staffing shortages across the state. So they're really trying to move this quickly. And we're excited about that process. We have hired Jasmine Sales and Hannah Marx as ABAs over at Park Avenue. We have hired Erin Petro as our kindergarten teacher. She was our building float sub over at Park Ave, so we're very glad to see that Peter system of people coming in and staying. We have allowed for Kelly Warner to be, she has volunteered to transfer from the Bartlett High School math department over to Webster Middle School in the math department as an academic interventionist. We think her skill set and knowledge on knowing what kids need in math at the high school and being able to be proactive with the academic interventionist blocks over at the Webster Middle School is going to benefit our students. Okay. In other updates, I just want to give you an instructional leadership update. Certainly, our district leadership team met on July 6th. And, you know, we still have Mrs. Promley with us. She was in attendance, our new principal, our assistant principals, and our district leadership team. And we really met to really pause and reflect upon the past year and to begin to start to prioritize what our instructional priorities would be and what the structures need to look like. We did an actual SWAT, looked at our strengths, our weaknesses, opportunities, and how we were going to turn our weaknesses into opportunities. It was a really good meeting, initial meeting. One of the things that we discussed that you're going to hear a lot about is really threading the connection of what we're trying to do to improve student achievement rates and really getting our teachers more involved in that conversation and that work. So one thing that we did talked about was we were sort of doing a K to 12 reset for our instructional leadership team and having our SAAS, we call them the SAAS, the statewide system of support team, help us with refocusing what our priorities are with our ILT teachers in really building something that we can then bring to all the teachers in the schools. So some of the initial areas that we discussed were, again, that sense of belonging and, of course, monitoring student understanding of grade level content and using data and culture and climate. Those sort of three things kept coming up. Because middle school and high school are in turnaround status, we are eligible to receive additional supports through the Department of Elementary and Education. They've contracted with TNTP. It's a new learning accelerated network. They're not going to replace our SAAS team, but they're in addition to helping districts really provide the support and coaching that they need. So we're in the process of really determining what that is, and we're not going to determine that in one meeting. It's sort of an ongoing thing. I had an hour-long conversation with the TNTP folks. So you'll be hearing more about how that rolls out. But it's exciting for us to be having the additional supports and then really focusing in on what the instructional priorities are going to be with measurable goals, with also recognizing that the learning behavior and culture in the schools have to have common expectations and that we have to really rebuild that. So as you know, we were talking about the PBIS resets. We have done a needs assessment with the PBIS teams. That data is being collated. So we're going to be taking all those pieces and really working with our ILT team at the District Summer Summit to put a plan of action in place that won't be a final plan. And of course, it will go back to the schools, go back to the school committees so that we can get people on the same page. So I think in just the short month of July, there's been a lot of conversations about making sure there's clear, consistent communication about what our instructional priorities are. And that folds in with what we have to do for the middle and the high school. We have to present because they receive targeted assistance grants. We have to present a plan. So we're trying to streamline our work in that area. I'm sorry, but I'm having a little difficulty here. Um, you know, we were talking a little bit. I am at the superintendent's conference and, you know, I think it's good for me to be here. I think a lot of districts are in the same position that we are in. A lot of people are feeling emotionally exhausted. It's, you know, we all had this year where we wanted everything to be normal. Well, the guest speakers today really summarized things for superintendents in a very, very inspirational manner, even though everybody's been facing challenges. John Diario and Robert Evans, John Diario is an author and an educator, and Robert Evans is a psychologist. And they spoke a lot about the need to create caring cultures and that everyone is been facing challenges and the things that used to work may not work now. So the conversation was invigorating because it made everyone feel that we should all just take a deep breath, number one, and number two, we survived a year of unprecedented experiences, whether it was staffing shortages or increased discipline or high turnover rate. Many, many, many districts across the nation have been facing that, and they really helped superintendents today put that pause button on and just focus on the fact that we made it through, like districts made it through. And I think the other workshop that I want to speak about that I went to was also inspirational, which ties into the instructional leadership work that I just shared about really setting strong instructional priorities, but giving teachers more voice and making sure that they are being creative. So the workshop that I went to was promoting equitable professional learning communities. And the presenters were practitioners in the schools. And what they do is they come in and they work with teachers on developing their own individual individual impact projects, which ties into student engagement. And I saw some very incredible things that were created by teachers. And so where, I think, as we proceed this year, that instructional leadership and building that distributive leadership with those people who apply for those positions will feel a little different this year. Will they'll be responsible for, you know, working with their peers on developing and monitoring how the students are experiencing the learning in the classroom. And what we really would like to do this year is really build what our expectations are for students from the classroom out, not from the central office down, but from the classroom out. What does that student experience look and feel like? Do all students have equitable access to things that interest them that is on grade level? And then, you know, continuing to build that tier-two and tier-three support for students who are below grade level. So I'm glad I'm at the conference and I am finding it worthwhile, and I will be bringing back more information on that. Just as a management and operations update, there's been ongoing onboarding of new staff as they're being hired. I personally meet with all staff. All staff that come into our district receive a mentor, and they have a mentor for two years. We have a a very strong mentor program led by Dr. Mackay, and principals are obligated to also meet with new staff once a month. Our new teacher orientation will be a two-day workshop this year, as it was last year. And we recently concluded custodian negotiations and administrative assistant negotiations on July 7th. And that both of those negotiations went very well. They will be on the August 24th school committee agenda because both unit members needed time to ratify those agreements. And in terms of community outreach, I was contacted by Mr. Greg Bazanet, who happens to be a Bartlett High School graduate and community member. He reached out to me after I presented at one of the town meetings and really wanted to sit with me to share his experience as a classroom teacher and college director around college and career readiness. And he came in and we had a very nice and long conversation about education the importance of having kids tap into their own strengths and be engaged in some type of hands-on learning. And he shared with me something that he didn't create, but from one of his colleges. That was a really nice visual that I think we can pull from to incorporate some different messaging, especially at the high school level around the innovation pathways and how the kids build off of their skills. So it was a wonderful time to meet with him. In other community outreach, I was contacted by the Yankee Express, and I was able to provide a message of gratitude to share through that newspaper. I don't think it's been published yet. I wanted to thank our community for supporting the Bartlett High School renovation project in the recent vote. And in other updates, summer school started on July 5th, and this is really coincidental, but last year and this year, we had no internet on the first day of summer school. It wasn't our fault, and Mrs. Prangialy will go into those details, I'm sure, in her report, but students and staff are engaged in really blending summertime learning and fun at each of the buildings. This Friday, I have a district safety meeting with our district safety team, which involves many of our town officials. And we're really going to focus on planning safety preparedness outreach more with the town and the community to get everybody on board with the focus of making sure that families get more engaged. So that meeting's on Friday. And on July 20th, I have an innovation pathways planning meeting to talk about getting our business advisory group up and running, to talk about swag and PR for students in the innovation pathways and building a plan for really an ongoing communication about the benefits of these new courses. For some reason, my computer is not working for me. Well, that broke up looking at my face for a little bit, didn't it? And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? I actually just have one. So you mentioned that the Bartlett principal has started, and the search continues for a Park Ave principal. Are we looking for an assistant principal at the middle school?
Yes, and Ms. Peterson is interviewing for the assistant principal with her team over there. Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to say that.
Okay, thank you. There are no other questions or comments. I will thank you, Dr. Gogan, for your update, and we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangialy.
Good evening. Thank you. The first item I have tonight is building committee update. So as Dr. Gogan stated, we were very happy and excited about our successful votes for our building project. We have our next meeting, which I'm sure is going to be pretty exciting, on June 19th, July 19th. We're switching them to the third Tuesdays of the month now instead of Thursdays to fit better with everybody's schedule. And we will hit the ground running. We will spend the next year really digging into the design of the high school before any construction actually starts. So we are definitely excited, and we would like, we were so impressed with the turnout and the way people came out to support the project at our meeting. In my time here, I don't ever remember a town meeting being that full and engaged. So thank you to all our residents and people who came out. I hope that trend continues. There were a lot of first-time voters there, a lot of people attending meetings for the first time, and I hope they found it informative and educational and that they continue to do that down the road. So thank you to everybody for their support. One thing that came out of that process for me was the lack of understanding about building maintenance and what actually goes on in the school system. You know, I sometimes bring larger items that need to be repaired and when things broken to you for your information, but I think it's a good idea to have a regular item on the agenda for maintenance, and that I think sometimes there might be very little to report on, but other times there might be quite, quite a few things to report on as maintenance things happen throughout the building. As Dr. Gogan stated and hinted to a little bit, we started off our summer school program with a bang, just like we did last year. Students were coming in and we were without internet for the first two days of the program. We didn't get it back until Wednesday. I think it was around 1:00 when we were in our meeting with leadership. I would love to tell you why or how we lost internet, and that long and short of it is, we don't know. We really don't know. We came in, things were not working. We tested all of our equipment here on site. Everything was operational. We were not getting any errors. We could we could buzz around our computers and talk to other buildings. We just couldn't get internet, which led us to believe it was Charter, a problem with Charter. We reached out to Charter, went through some long calls with Charter, who was pretty insistent that their computer and their information looked fine and that they didn't see a problem, that it had to be on our end. After going back and forth a little bit, we were able to get them out. They worked on Tuesday night with us on site until about 9:00. Thought they thought they found something with their equipment. They changed out their equipment and reprogrammed, and we still had the same issue. So at that point, they were pointing to our equipment. We called in an engineer from Acuity. They helped us with our other issue we had last year. So they started 6:00 Wednesday morning. They all met here with Charter to review. All of our settings looked fine. The engineer was on site. They couldn't find anything wrong with our equipment. They spent until about noon, and basically, the long and short of it is that our internet comes in through a piece of equipment called a RAG, and then it talks to a switch. Somehow, it's, it's, it's I'm drawing a blank on it, but it's basically one wire that's got two connections in it that goes into the switch. They unplugged that, and they put in two separate cables instead of the one cable, and it worked. So they were all baffled from Charter, our engineer, because they said that shouldn't happen. They don't know why it happened. They don't understand it because it shouldn't make a difference. They checked other cables. The other cables didn't work also, so it wasn't just a bad cable. So debriefing in my office, trying to say, how do I know this isn't going to happen again? And they said, it shouldn't have happened in the first place. We can't explain it. So, you know, everything's working now. Everything looks good on both ends. They never saw a problem, so I wish I could give you, and it's easy to say when something's broken, and you know what the fix was. The fix was actually changing the one connection into into the two connections, which, you know, neither one of them could explain why that was the case. But we did get up and running. It is working. We're not touching any cables right now. We're letting it go, or the speeds are fine. Everything is there. Another kind of hypothesis we might have had about that is it just happened to be after the Fourth of July weekend, we did have strong storms on Saturday night, although no equipment was damaged or anything like that. We don't know if maybe some settings along the way, some place in some facility got switched because we did have other issues in the buildings. Our custodian at the elementary school came in to do a check over the weekend, and he came in on Tuesday morning, and the generator was running outside. At the middle school, our custodian came in and the AC had gone off. It showed low power failure. So there was some kind of power surge that happened. Is it common that maybe it affected every building? You know, I think that's it's odd, you know, it's odd that we would have a problem at every building. But we called a mechanic for the middle school. He came out. He reset some of the equipment. It was fine. So it was just a visit for him. We had the generator people come out and take a look at the generator. They were able to reset it and start it. So we're operational there. At Park Ave, we do have a couple of things that have been going on. We have a couple rooftop units that needed some repair in June. We had, they have two failovers. They had, they had run two cycles. On cycle one was not working. It was working on cycle two. After looking at the equipment, our HVAC person mechanic stated that the coils in the two rooftop units are leaking water. Without actually taking apart, he was looking at how much it was going to cost to replace the parts in the two rooftop units. Looking at them a little further, they were $18,000 a piece to replace the coils in the rooftop units, and we would need two of them. As he started investigating it, he noticed that the two units are only eight years old. They shouldn't be leaking in the spots that they were leaking, and the serial numbers were only one off from one another. It looked like they came out in the same batch, so he started to believe that maybe there was a malfunction in that batch. So he started going after warranty and calling the companies. This went on for a week or two, trying to work his way through the warranty process, and even to get a call back is very difficult, challenging at these times. After much argument, they said that's just normal wear and tear for those parts. So he said, what he did is he said, I'll spend a day trying to see if I can isolate and fix the coils, and if not, we're going to need to purchase new coils. So he spent about a day and a half here. He was able to get in there. He found three leaks in one. He repaired the leaks. He found a leak in the other. He repaired that. So the both units are 100% operational right now. They're up and running. I did ask him to take a look at the other units, so he's going to be spending some time just going through and see what the status of those are. You know, I asked, is it something in our water? Is there corrosion? Is there something? And he said, there's no corrosion in the units. They're just leaking with a main copper tubing goes into the unit inside. So he, I think he still strongly believes that it's a malfunction of the part. But the company is not hearing, hearing that. So, but the good news is, for now, they're operational. The guys have been working really hard getting the buildings clean for summer. I know we had some concerns about the outside of the building. Month of June, custodians were using up their vacation time. We were short-staffed. There's a lot going on at the buildings in June. And then we have a very small window of time to focus and get certain areas of the building clean before summer school comes in. We have a very small window with the cafeteria, because as you know, we're running summer food programs all summer long. So the guys were focusing on that and getting that stuff done. If they have been outside, they have cleaning up. Their typical schedule is Fridays outside. They go outside and they mow and they trim on Fridays. So that's a normal practice for them. They just hadn't done it for a couple of weeks because of just being short-staffed and trying to get the building up to date. But they know that is a priority for them. Another issue that we had at Park Ave is we've had a leak in one of our bathrooms in the pre-ke, pre-ke area. It's actually coming through the wall, and they can't get to it, so they have to cut a little bit into the wall. So we have a plumber coming out to do that, hopefully resolve that leak and take care of that. And then we are happy that we are getting our cafeteria tables back at Park Ave on Friday. We have movers coming to pick them up from the middle school and deliver them to Park Ave. So we're going to have a normal configured cafeteria. I know both schools are really excited to start getting back to a normal routine with their everyday lunches. So that's about it for Park Ave. I will go over to the middle school. Our middle school things are really in good shape. We had that little issue over the July 4th weekend. There was nothing serious. They came out. It was just a matter of resetting the equipment. We have a couple potholes fixed, so we've been working with the town. They will be taking care of that. David has been doing his normal maintenance. He's replacing filters and ceiling tiles throughout the building if they get dirty. We did have a couple leaks on the roof earlier in the year, at the end, like May, early June, but those were covered under warranty. They came and they fixed them, but we just had to wait till it rained again before we replaced anything to make sure that the leaks were actually fixed, and they were. So that's good there. We're in pretty good shape at the middle school. Just as far as regular maintenance too, back in April, we had a bunch of floor tiles replaced over the break. We had a company come in. We have an we have stock of floor tiles from the original building, and there, over the years, there's been some cracks in them. So we had a company come in over break and replace those with new tiles. So we're, we're doing our best to keep up with the buildings. At the high school, we have a couple of things that we are looking at repairing here at the high school. One of the things we had, it's an older building. These things happen. We had a leak in one of the bathrooms. We shut the water off to fix the leak, which was great. No problem. We go to turn the water back on. We cannot. The valve is stuck shut. So we have to have a plumber come and replace the valve over there. Our exhaust fan in the kitchen is not working. We reached out to one of our HR companies, and they looked at it. They cannot find, because it's so old, they can't find another one to fit in the spot that's the same size. So we've asked them to see if he can maybe get something a little smaller, and then we can fill around, but we do need an exhaust fan in the kitchen, so we're working at that. We also had our kettles at the end of the year. We have a unit that is called a combi. It's a combi steamer, and it's attached to the kettle. It's an old-school unit that is you two, two units connected into one. They run through the water, and the plumbing all runs through one, and it heats it. That unit died at the end of the school year, so the cafeteria was doing their best, just using other Uh, at the end of the school year, so the cafeteria was doing uh, their best just using other equipment. Uh, we've had people come in and look at it. Uh, just to repair that boiler section without even touching the equipment is, oh, it was, the fault was about eighteen thousand dollars. Um, so it's, it's just as well. To get new equipment at this point. So that's what we're doing. We're having some people come out. We're looking at some new equipment. Uh, we've certainly got our ears. That's original equipment. Uh, kettle over there. It's forty something years old, so we've certainly got our use out of it. Um, I don't want people to think that. Buying new equipment now means what are we going to do when the building is built? Are we just going to throw things away? That's not what we did. We repurposed everything that we had purchased at Park Ave before and we'll do that. Um, we look to our other schools. If it's newer equipment here that we can replace at the other schools, we do that. Um, even at Park Ave, I remember off the top of my head, uh, when we were building, we lost our generator. So we had to go out and we bought a. Pretty expensive generator. Um, when we were building the new school, um. We ended up reaching out to our local departments and the fire department ended up taking the new generator. So it was used in another local building. So we do repurpose, but um, the, the ladies can't go uh, work in the kitchen. Without the kettle and the combi oven. So we're going to have to look to replace those. And then, uh, last but not least, we move over to the ceiling here, the roofs at the high school. There are a couple leaks in A two and C two. Uh, we have the roofing company coming out again to see what they can do about those leaks. Um, and we will repair them and replace tiles. And just make sure we're cleaning the building. Um, in getting it ready for the upcoming school year. Our guys work really hard to take care of this building. Um. Uh, I believe Miss Sediki, we went, went for a tour last week and you saw the work that they're doing firsthand. We uh. Everything is pulled out of the classrooms, every piece of furniture, every piece of. Everything. They empty out the classrooms. They're stripping, they're cleaning, they're replacing, they're repairing. Um, they've done such a good job in making sure our buildings are clean and shine. Yeah, a- at all buildings. So I just want to thank them for their hard work. Um, and I hope these kind of updates will be helpful. And um, you know, we always appreciate the community if they have concerns or they see something, please reach out and let us know. Um, because it's a priority for us to maintain and update our buildings. Are there any questions about maintenance?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Um, I was just thinking when you mentioned that. He had gone to the buildings. I know several years ago at. Our first school committee meeting of the school year. We would all jointly. Begin our meeting by going through the buildings. Maybe we could do that again. I think it's a nice opportunity for us to see the building and to see the staff that is also working in the building at that time.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Dr. Gogan? Oh, you're on mute.
I think it's a great tradition that we should get back to doing. I remember doing that and I think it's a wonderful way to start our meetings. I think we started at five. Um, and then we toured all the buildings and then we came back and did our um, our school committee meeting. I think that's a wonderful thing. Um, and our building principals will be at the um, August meeting. So I think we could, we could. Do, do a train and pick them all up and bring them right back to the school committee meeting.
Sounds good.
Mrs. Grigson, thank you for the updates about the maintenance. Um, it's clear that there's a lot that goes on on a day-to-day basis. And I will say, I, I did have the opportunity, thank you for bringing some. Partly grads in the building that wanted to have a little dose of nostalgia before construction begins, even though it was a while before construction began. Uh, I was floored at the amount of. I've always known that there was a lot of cleaning going on and things like that over the summer, but I. I actually took pictures. I didn't, I can show anybody that wants to see them, but. Everything was out of the classrooms, e- every single desk, chair, piece of furniture, everything. So the floors could be stripped and. Clean, waxed, whatever. Incredible. So, yeah, big shout out to everybody. And thank you for taking us on that trail.
Absolutely.
Through the chair. I have a question about. We had a problem with the boiler for the winter time.
Yes.
Have one down. How, what's the status of that?
That was.
I know it's somehow.
Nope, that was fixed in at um, in May-June, at the end of May, I believe it was, because we were completely down. Um, they, we were having the part built. Uh, the part came in. He went to install it. And it was just too corroded underneath and he could not repair it because it was so rusted out. So he ended up having to shave down that section and just completely bypass that section. So on each boiler, so right now we have one large boiler and one small boiler. The large boiler handles the entire building. The small boiler can only carry about twenty percent of the load. So it, it, you know, without the big boiler, we cannot heat the building. Um, so the, the big boiler is what we've really been trying to take care of. Um. Making sure that, uh, and if you see it, you can see how it, I'm just hopeful. That, that we can make it through another winter or two, um, because if that goes, we're going to have to look at getting. Some emergency boilers in here pretty quick. Um. He said on a scale of a one to ten, ours is a one. He said it. The fact that it's lasted this long. And it, it's just. Normal wear and tear. It's corrosion. It's rusted. It's rotted out. Um, but on each side of the boiler, there's sections, there's twenty-two sections. You can, you can bypass a section. It costs about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, and that was maybe four years ago. Um, I've replaced like three sections already. Um. Because bypassing them, the more you bypass, you're degrading the way the boiler functions. So, you know, it's best to try and fix it if you can. Um, but at this point. We didn't want to, you know. That was the first one we've had to bypass. So we're in okay shape. It is operational. It is holding pressure. That's what's happening before it was leaking so bad. It wouldn't hold any pressures to operate. So we are holding pressure um, in the boiler. So hopefully we are okay. We're just keeping our fingers crossed with that one.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
And. Yeah, I just have one thing on the, under other updates. Um, as you know, um, we hired a new food service director, Kelsey Sanders. And I'm really excited to say that she has come in and hit the ground running. Um, she's doing a fantastic job learning. She is a new food service director, so um, she's fresh out of school for that. And um, she has gone above and beyond and is working super hard. Um, in digging in and learning the ropes and she's doing great. Um, so I just wanted to update you about our summer programs. We did start with our open sites for summer feeding. Um, we did advertise that. We have sites at Park Ave. Um, they are open from eleven thirty to twelve fifteen. Our middle school is open from eleven thirty to twelve fifteen. And then we are doing the library on Tuesdays and Thursdays lunch from eleven thirty to twelve. Um, we also service head start in the summer. Um, our program runs from July fifth through August fourth. Uh, we are open for free meals to anyone eighteen and under in the community. Um, this week at Park Ave in the middle school, they were taking part in some sampling fresh fruits from our own school gardens. So that was exciting. Um, during lunchtime, they got to try some uh, squash and zucchini. Um. And at the middle school, they got to eat some of the fresh cucumbers that we grow. So our gardens are being put to use and we're getting veggies out of them and it's really exciting. I had a meeting. Um, with uh, Kelsey and Mr. Germano and they're already asking about expanding potentially down the road. Because there's more. They want to get more out of them. Um, so they plan on doing some more taste testing um, at the schools throughout the summer. Um, they're also um, including a lot of variety of fruits and veggie offerings, including our some seasonal and local produce. Um. There is going to be some upcoming raffles for our students. Um, we have a lot of swag and a lot of giveaways. From the Farm to School Program and Project Bread. Um. They are giving away a book. Um, for our sites. It's all about food, so it'll be educational, but a good child um, age book for that. Um, they have also T-shirts and sunglasses and bouncy balls that they're giving away. Um, they have posters around town and they've advertised. Um. About the summer feeding program. And we have been very fortunate this year. Um, at the end of the year, the state have reached out. And we participate in the D O D Fresh Foods and Veggie Program. And that's usually a commodity that we get. It kind of comes off of our government food. Um, from July first through September, we can get as much fruits and veggies for free as we want. Um, that does not come up of our allotment. So we are taking uh, as much advantage of that as we can. Um, so uh, they're doing a great job. The summer programs are operational and um. We're really excited uh, to go through and she is ready for the beginning of the school year. She's digging in, so. Um, that concludes my report. Thank you. Yes, yes. Um, I did talk to her and I said, you know, I don't know what our August twenty-fourth uh, meeting looks like. It's going to be a long agenda, but I would love to have her here um, to get to say hello and to continue the good work um, that. Ellen um, Nylend started and I know um. Ellen, you know, Kelsey's had some time on the phone with Ellen a couple of times, just touching base on things and uh. It's nice to also have that mentor, you know, so it's great. Absolutely.
Through the chair. Um, so I have searched the website and have finally found the information about the summer's program. The Summer Eats program. I'm wondering if it could be on the main page.
I did have it there. It might have dated out. I might have had a date in there.
Okay.
So I can put that back there. Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Well, Mrs. Grigson, thank you for your updates.
Thank you.
The, under old business, we have no agenda items. We'll move on to new business. And the first item under new business is the acceptance of a donation from Global Montello for Park Avenue.
Uh, I will actually take that one.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. We're tag teaming here. Dr. Gogan and I are tag teaming. Um. And actually, Dr. Gogan was on vacation when they reached out. They did this once before. It's the car wash up on Route sixteen.
Yeah.
On the honey farms, they did another car wash and the funds that they raised, um. They like to donate to Park Avenue Elementary. They raised six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, they called, they asked me to go up and pick up a check. So um, we thank them for their donation and they were really excited to be supporting the school.
Great. Any thoughts on what we're going to be using that money for? We haven't decided yet.
Haven't decided yet. We will leave that up to the principal. It's can be used for any kind of educational. Supply or anything they want. Yep.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the donation from Global Montello Group. There's a motion in a second, Mrs. Grigson. Could you please move the committee?
Absolutely. Mr. Adam Aquas?
Yes.
Mr. Macarado?
Yes.
Ms. Boy?
Yeah.
Ms. Mallet?
Yes.
Chair Sediki.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, and thank you to Bo Montello Group for their continued support of Park Avenue Elementary School. It's greatly appreciated. And the next item on the agenda is regarding surplus items that outdated miscellaneous wonders. Two thousand seventeen reading books from Park Avenue Elementary School.
Thank you. A- as you know, we um, updated our curriculum to the twenty-twenty version of Wonders. Um, for a couple of reasons, eh, on Ed curate, which is a. Teacher vetted program. It's meets all the qualifications. Of standards alignment and classroom expectations. So we purchased the twenty-twenty version. The twenty-seventeen version did not meet all of those qualifications, but they're still good materials. So we'd like to surplus it and actually do one of two things. First, we'd like to. Um, tap into our parochial schools who also use wonders. Uh, St. Joe's, I believe, uses the twenty-seventeen version. If they would like it, we would love to donate it to them. Um, and or um, get a price to sell it. Um, but we do not need these materials and we are seeking to surplus them. One of the things that we also want to do is make sure that any of the books that um, are anthologies. Um, that we um, collect them and send them home with our students. I just got a battery warning.
Oh, no.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that um. You know, I think the priority is to make sure that kids in our community get um, access to any of these materials that they want. Um, and can use and certainly um, my preference would be to donate to St. Joe's if they would like it. After it is surplused.
Excellent. And then also possibly sending those anthologies home with our shipments as well, right?
Definitely doing that first and then giving the remaining materials um, to St. Joe's if they would like it.
Excellent. That sounds good. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair. I don't know if there's a timeline on it, but you know, I know that there are many times that parents are looking for resources. To work with their children at home. Um, so I don't know if maybe at um, I think the open houses. If they could be put out for parents as well.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea and have a table of free take it home. Yeah, I like that.
Yeah. Great. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to declare surplus items of miscellaneous wonders two thousand seventeen reading materials. Into direct assistance granted for business and finance to option off, donate or otherwise recycle disposable items. In conjunction with provisions of master law thirty. So. There's a motion in a second, Mrs. Grigson, the committee please.
Sure, Mr. Adam Aquas.
Yes.
Macarado?
Yes.
Ms. Boy? Ms. Mallet?
Yeah.
Chair Sediki.
Yes.
Thank you. I've been excited on the agenda is the approval of three instructional coaches which are Esser funded.
Thank you. Um, as you know, we've been really working diligently to um, support teachers with. Um, using the research-based materials that they have, still giving them the creativity to teach um, in their classrooms. And we, this past year, used Hill as literacy coaches to come in and help our teachers with lesson planning. And um, I have to be honest, I don't think it was as effective as we wanted it to be. Um, so we're really trying to go to the next level of um, supporting our teachers and I think. We're looking to have um, instructional coaches come and be um, placed at every school. To help teachers with the implementation of grade level content, scaffolding, not overscaffolding, using data. And really to the point of where um. They're using the materials um, with a balanced creativity approach. And we'd like to get some outside consultants to coach the coaches on coaching. Um, because coaching can go either way. It can be another adult in the classroom, um, or it can be, let me help you with your practice. Um, and, and building a, a system of being able to share best practices. So that's the model that we'd like to do. Uh, we'd like to hire three instructional coaches, one in each building, have um, some outside consultants really work with those culture. Coaches on coaching teachers. Um, and helping follow through the year to look at data um, and practices. Uh, we do have Esser funds that we would like to use for this. Um, so I'm seeking school committee approval for these three additional positions. Years ago, we did have instructional coaches in um, some of the buildings. The job description for those coaches still is relevant and it is in your school committee packet.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gogan. Any questions or comments from the committee?
My chair.
Yes.
Um, so I'm familiar with instructional coaches um, in the district where I work. And they really do prove to be pretty invaluable and great resources for teachers. So I do think that it is a good idea to. Provide that support um, for classroom teachers.
Excellent. After the Esser funding is, you know, no longer available, what are our thoughts around? Con- continuing these uh, instructional coaches?
Well, ideally, the, the philosophy behind the instructional coaches is to really um, help everyone bring their practice up. Um, and develop different types of scales. So I, I couldn't commit that our budget would be able to um, absorb that. But I certainly, if it's effective and we're seeing progress, we would certainly do what we do during the budget season. Set those priorities and um, make sure that we kept those positions. I think this is a, a, a position that we will, you know, they. I think this is a, a, a position that we will, you know, the importance of having some consultants coaching the coaching and using data to um, really measure the effectiveness of it on student achievement rates is what we're really gonna wanna do. So I couldn't promise, but I think, you know, if it is effective, certainly it would be a priority, just like we do our budgets every year. We focus and prioritize on student needs.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Gogan.
You're welcome.
If there are no further questions or discussion about this matter, I'll entertain a motion to approve the three instructional coaches. And children. So, sorry. There's a motion in a second. Ms. Grigley, would you please?
Sure, Mr. Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Ms. Snapperato?
Yes.
Ms. Boy?
Yeah.
Ms. Mill?
Yeah.
Chair Sodiki?
Yes.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of an interim dean of students at Bartlett High School, also Esser-funded.
Thank you. Um, I have had many opportunities to sit down with um, the new principal, Mr. Collins and Ms. Nievez, the assistant principal, to really um, talk about uh, some of the data at the school and what the needs are. Um, and you know, certainly we want our principal to be successful. I certainly have heard um, the teachers who would like to have a dean of students. I think Mr. Collins' philosophy is, is spot-on. Uh, he sees a dean of students or an interim dean of students as not just someone who's doing discipline, but someone who's also an administrator, who can be an instructional leader, who can be an additional support for teachers, who can be that um, additional um, hands-on to help um, the entire school meet their goals. So I, I like his philosophy about that. It's not just a discipline position. It's um, and also someone who's gonna help uh formulate a team of support for our teachers and our students. So I would like to um, put that in place for this upcoming year um, and use Esser funds and once again, be able to measure progress and see um, how effective that is. I think as we're uh, doing some work on learning environments and looking at uh, PBIS across the district and clear and consistent expectations in classrooms. Um, you know, our goal is that we hope the clearer the expectations are, that the um, behaviors dissipate some because there's not different expectations in different classrooms. So building that system is gonna take some time and I think this position would be helpful during that um, transition time.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the committee about the interim dean? I just have a question about um, the, I guess, the vision. How do we expect the three different administrator roles to be delineated at Bartlett with the addition of this position?
I think traditionally at Bartlett, um, Ms. Sodiki, the um, admin, the assistant principal was um, sort of an instructional leader. The dean was all discipline and the principal was management and operations. I think Mr. Collins has a different philosophy about building a team. I think it's a shared responsibilities, certainly. Um, I don't think uh, I, I, I don't think he's um, afraid to get involved with discipline or uh, evaluations or instructional leadership. And I, I think in the conversations that I've had about the dean, he wants to see this position as not just clearly uh, disciplined. Certainly, um, when you're looking at culture um, and supporting students, it's, it's not just having someone to send students to when they're misbehaving. Um, so I think he has a broader vision. So I, I, I don't want to uh, clarify those roles right now because I do believe that uh, the new principal has to um, formulate what he would like that to look like with his administrative team and I want to respect that. But I don't think it's going to be just a discipline role. Um, I do think it's gonna be a little broader than that, certainly. Um, you know, evaluating staff, um, being um, a part of the team, working with the instructional leadership team in that building. I think he has a broader vision.
Sounds like the, the plan would be that each of these administrators aren't, that would really necessarily have a specialty? And they all would be involved in all of the different aspects?
I, I think that's the way it is over at um, Park Ave. I think um, they're, it's a shared, it's been a shared baton. Um,
oh. Uh-oh.
Battery.
Battery.
I guess that battery thing wasn't joking. Well, um, I don't think we have much else on the agenda. But I would like to give her a moment to see if she's able to rejoin before we move on. And maybe, maybe this topic will be something that's better um, discussed with Mr. Collins this year to be better understand how that will look out. I know, I don't want to say she's in the back there. I thought she was.
I thought so, too.
That's why I just, you know, continue to.
She was plugged in. Instead of you plugging in, she said, yes, I was.
I mean, I think regardless, unless there are other questions or, or any decision on approval we'll hinge on, Dr. Gogan's response, would it be acceptable for us to have our discussion and have our motion if there is one? And then resume the discussion with Mr. Collins this year? That works. So if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the interim dean of students at Bartlett High School. So, sorry. There's a motion in a second. Ms. Grigley, would you please?
Sure. Mr. Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Ms. Snapperato?
Yes.
Ms. Boy?
Yeah.
Ms. Mill?
Yeah.
Chair Sodiki?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is a review transfer and signing of warrants, bills, parental vouchers. There are no warrants tonight, so we do not have that.
Regime and discussion. You're back on your phone?
You're muted. You're muted.
My computer was plugged in, so um, I'm not sure what's going on with my computer. It just died.
I'm gonna
Probably a switch.
And not your computer.
Ah. So I, as I was saying, um, Kelly, I, I think that I wanna let the principal really design the roles for the three administrators. But I do think there's a need for an interim dean. Um, we certainly want um, the new principal to be successful. We want to provide the ample support that students and staff need. And I think um, you know, while we have the opportunity to use Esser funds, this is a smart way to use.
Okay, yeah, we agree.
This.
Hmm.
Very, very.
So, Dr. Gogan, you're breaking up. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can hear you.
The bad news is you're breaking up. The good news is that we have approved the interim dean. We approved it while you were dialing back in. Uh, we definitely wanna hear more about it, but realize that the connection is less than ideal. Um, my other question, of course, which we can talk again the next time we're together, would be related to how we'll continue to fund this role when the Esser funds are no longer available. But I'm not sure if your connection is good enough to pass that in.
I, I, I heard the question and I, I do think that, that all of the additional positions that we have hired, we're going to have to go through that process of prioritizing what we need, what are the needs at that time. If that's two years down the road, um, and how effective the additional positions have been. And I think that's a larger conversation. That's not a simple answer. So, um, but thank you for that. Thank you for approving both um, the instructional coaches and the interim dean. Um, I think um, that's going to help us.
Thank you for bringing them to us. I think I agree. Great. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Dr. Gogan? We've kind of moved through the agenda here, but I wanna make sure.
No, no. Nope, I'm, I'm good. I'm sorry about the internet connection.
We appreciate you dialing in. Um, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So, sorry. There's a motion in a second. Ms. Grigley, would you please?
Mr. Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Ms. Snapperato?
Yes.
Ms. Boy?
Yeah.
Ms. Mill?
Yeah.
Chair Sodiki?
Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, good night.
It's raining out right now.